Zoom meeting. This session is on public finance. In order to better arrange for members to speak, please with the duty staff, please clear the raise hand feature. Now, those who would like to speak, please use the raise hand. Feature, I'd like to first invite the Secretary for Financial Services and the Treasury to speak. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. So for this special meeting, we're going to examine the estimates of expenditure for public finance. Before members ask questions, I'd like to make a brief introduction. The estimated total expenditure of the Treasury Branch and the departments under its purview for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three is about seventy-eight point seven two eight billion, an increase of twenty-eight point two nine four billion over the original estimate of fifty point four three four billion for last year. It's about a fifty-six percent increase. This is mainly attributed to a net increase in the estimated non-recurring expenditure under head one four seven of the Treasury Branch by twenty-eight point two oh seven billion. The increase in the estimate for this year covers the non-recurring expenditure on a new round of the consumption voucher scheme. Discounting the non-recurring expenditure, the estimated total recurrent expenditure of the Treasury Branch and the departments under its purview this year is nine point two six one billion, which is comparable to the original estimate of nine point two oh four billion for last year. I would like to speak briefly on a few key areas of work in the coming year. Firstly, on public finance, we have all along been adhering to the principles of exercising fiscal prudence, keeping expenditure within the limits of revenue and committing resources as in when justified and needed in public finance management. Over the past two years, we've allocated additional resources in a prompt and decisive manner to defuse crises, including the injection of some two hundred billion in total into the antiepidemic fund and the launching of counter cyclical measures on a massive scale as announced in the budgets to relieve people's hardship and stabilize the economy. Fighting the epidemic is our overriding mission at present. The government will mobilize all available manpower and resources to contain and stabilize the epidemic to ensure the sustainability of public finances will continue to examine carefully any new initiatives that would incur recurrent expenditure and strictly control the growth of the civil service so that our long-term financial commitments will be commensurate with the increase in revenue. As for revenue, in addition to maintaining the development of vibrant civil economy and identify new areas of growth, we will introduce a global minimum tax rate and implement the proposal of revising the rating system in Hong Kong in the medium term, which may help increase our revenue respectively from profit tax and rates. In the long run, we will continue to explore different ways to broaden revenue sources in order to sustain healthy public finances. Secondly, on international tax cooperation, Hong Kong has pledged to implement BEPS two point zero. We plan to submit a legislative proposal to the Legislative Council in the second half of this year to implement the global minimum effective tax rate and other relevant requirements from twenty twenty-three onwards in accordance with the international consensus. At the same time, we will consider introducing a domestic minimum top-up tax with regard to large multinational enterprise groups with global turnover of seven hundred fifty million euros, starting from the year of assessment twenty twenty-four to twenty-five to ensure that their effective tax rate meets the global minimum effective taste of fifteen percent so as to safeguard Hong Kong's taxing rights. We have been exchanging views with the affected M and Es on matters relating to the implementation of BEPS two point O and have reaffirmed that the government would preserve the advantages of Hong Kong's tax regime in terms of its simplicity, certainty, and transparency, maintain the territorial source principle of taxation, as well as minimize the compliance burden on M and Es. Thirdly, on the rating system, the Financial Secretary has proposed in the budget that the rating system be revised. To start with, rates concession for domestic properties should be granted in a more targeted manner. That is, only those eligible owners who are natural persons can apply for rates concession for one domestic property under the name. The government has also proposed the introduction of a progressive rating system for domestic properties to better reflect the affordable users' pay principle. The government plans to implement the above proposals in phases from twenty twenty-three, twenty-four onwards, and preparation is underway. Fourthly, the F S has also proposed to provide a tax deduction for domestic rental expenses starting from the year of assessment twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Details of the proposals are being drawn up. We plan to introduce a view into into the Let's Go in the second quarter of this year with the aim of securing its passage within the current legislative session. Fifthly, the F S has announced in the budget the launching of a new round of the consumption voucher scheme under which electronic consumption vouchers with a total of ten thousand dollars will be dispersed in installments to each eligible person. The scheme is expected to benefit about six point six million people. To relieve people's financial burden in the midst of the fifth wave of the epidemic, we have started to disperse vouchers with a value of five thousand under phase one of the new round of the scheme to about six point three million eligible people who have successfully registered for the scheme last year. The remaining vouchers will be dispersed together with the vouchers for the newly registered eligible persons in phase two, which will commence in the middle of this year. Chairman, my colleagues, and I will be happy to answer members' questions. Thank you. Let me read out the order speech. Mister Tony, sir, Professor Nelson, Mr. Chen Chen Ying, Mr. Winkong, Mr. Edmund Wong, Mister So and Mister Mister Tony, sir, please. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my question with reply serial number F S T B T S Y O O three on non-departmental quarters. I am a bit disappointed in the reply. We see insufficient supply of land and housing in Hong Kong. Any extra N D Q units should be dealt with in an appropriate manner. However, the government is not able to provide us with a figure on how long a unit stays vacant until it is sold out. Because it seems that you're taking a very long time in doing that, and so I'm very disappointed in that. The Audit Commission has stated previously that occupancy occupancy rate of N D Q unit is low. The C S B will conduct a frequent review on non-departmental quarters. I would like to ask about the occupancy rate, and I see from the reply that there is no answer because it is not under your ambit. Oh, I am just asking the question to the administration. Housing is a very important topic, and so this is why I am again disappointed by your reply. And thirdly, I've suggested that by twenty twenty-five, that nine N D Q sites be sold off. But then in the reply, you see that three of the sites will be leased or disposed by land sale when appropriate, and six of the sites are still being used. And there is no timeline and no target. Has any work been done? And can some occupied units be left vacant as soon as possible so that it could be disposed by land sale? All the N D Q sites are valuable land, and you could sell them off for about one to two billion. So the government is decreasing the funding provided to social welfare. And actually, by selling off one N D Q site, you will be able to provide funding for this sector. So I am once again disappointed by the administration that you are not taking the initiative to handle disposal of such units. I just want to express my views. Secretary, so how can you alleviate Mister's disappointment? Well, we have heard your views, Mister there. I just want to say that, of course, we are united as a team, and we are not trying to show our responsibilities. Or any work that is in relation to other departments will work closely with them. Perhaps a government property agency can give you and reply. Well, if they we see a surplus of property in N D Q, then we would come up with a transitional arrangement. So before it is disposed of by land sale, then we would rent it out at market price. And when time is appropriate, then we will arrange for disposal by land sale. There are many factors impacting the time of sale, such as the profit made through the sales and whether the redevelopment could optimize the site. Therefore, we do have to make many considerations before we come up with and with appropriate handling. So it is about to give you a timeline on when we can dispose it by land sale. But we do try to do the best we can, even if we are not able to sell it off as soon as possible, then we would make arrangements. Professor Nelson Lam.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I have there are two parts to my question. First is to take a look at it in a macro manner. I am very happy to see five areas listed out by the administration so that we know clearly the future direction of public finance. I want to focus on paragraph forty-three on the of the budget. And also financial sector taking about twenty-three percent of the G D P, but then only seven percent of the population in the labor force. I am sure that you have all seen these numbers in the long run. Back to the five points listed today. How can you actually make a reverse in the situation? That's my first question. And secondly, on F S T B T S Y O O four and O two zero. The I R D has been controlling very well its spending. And the fifteen billion of taxes would be affected. We're not talking about a very large number, but then that would gradually face out the tax concessions. How can you once again enhance tax concession so that you'll be able to attract overseas companies? And when there are any changes in the tax structure, how can you ensure that the public and also the accountants will be able to adjust to the changes? Well, thank you for your questions. First of all, the government plays two role, first to try to enhance the pie and second to manage the pie. So we want to come up with a low tax rate to maintain our competitiveness. Therefore, we have pledged to maintain our simple tax system and try to lower the burden on companies. So this is how we are trying to enlarge the pie.
And the government's role is to share the pie. In paragraph five, I said that to fight the pandemic, we have provided various rounds of relief under the antiepidemic fund. And we've also put in place a number of tax concessions. We are grateful to members for their support in this regard. We hope that in the short run, we can help her to share the pie evenly. And Mister Lem talked about a BEPS two point zero. Well, even worth the the minimum global tax rate, that doesn't mean that our advantage is lost. Because the arrangements mainly target large enterprises. For enterprises are not making a seven hundred fifty million euros per year, they will not be affected. Even for those who have been caught, where our core advantages still prevail in terms of simplicity, certainty, and transparency of our tax regime. And we've also got one country, two system, and the nation as our support, and also a number of measures under the fourteen-five-year plan. We also provided some tax concessions, including a tax concessions for marine, the marine sector, for instance. They, if they do not conflict with the principles under BEPS two point zero, they can continue. This will help to ensure our competitiveness. Mister Ronic Chen, thank you, Chair.
My question is F S T B T S Y O one three. Now, in the reply that is said that the Department of Economics of the Chinese Republic of Hong Kong have completed a research report on the effectiveness of the twenty twenty-one consumption voucher scheme, putting out the scheme has boosted an additional overall consumption by approximately eighty to one hundred and ten percent, which is much higher than the consumption voucher schemes launched by other places in the past. Does that mean that in future, when it comes to relief, the government will only issue consumption vouchers instead of cash? Now, question oh one two, the spending for the last round of C V S was much higher, and this time we have to spend four hundred million dollars, although that is only zero point six percent of the total voucher issued. I'd like to know what is the reason for this a sharp increase in expenses? And the last question relates to oh three two. Twenty-four billion dollars were spent on antiepidemic efforts. One billion dollars were used as a protection fund for adverse and a major incidence after vaccination. From time to time, we have got media reports, but many of them were subsequently found who not really directly related to vaccination. We have two point two three million people vaccinated. I'd like to know whether they were, there have been serious incidents. And I'd like to know whether lots of money has been dispersed under the fund because that is some useful in promoting vaccination. All right, I would take the first question as regards the expenses for the E V S. My colleague can supplement. Now, in future, will we continue to issue consumption scheme or cash? Well, it depends on the prevailing situation. This time around, the market was well boosted by the first round. And as for our next step, I think it will be subject to a dynamic review in deciding how and whether we should continue with this system. And the third question relates to the cost. Because we need data from other departments, I will collate such data and get back to Mister Chen in the future. So on the cost, Mister, Miss Wong, yes. The administrative course of E V S this time was based on our last round. Why have we seen an increase? Because members may note that the E V S has got two phases. Last year, we had a lot of overlapping with the ten thousand cash relief scheme. Now, so last time, manpower was able to deal with both schemes. But last year, we created time limited posts. And by the time we have this new round, many of the positions have left. So we have to recreate these posts. So the administrative course is to the tune of four hundred million dollars. Um, Mr. Ring Kong, thank you. My question relates to F S T B T S Y O O seven stem duty. Many years. Uh, many property transactions were done through a transfer of companies. Have you done any survey? Because in the reply to oh oh seven, we're just told the total number of property transactions. I'd like to know whether you have statistics on the transfers or sales of properties by means of companies. Because if you do not have any statistics, I'll let you know the reason why. Because that can make up a large part of our public revenue. And the second question relates to question oh four two, and that is the progressive scale of stem duty on property transactions. Now, we're told that you have made reference from practices of many countries. I'd like to know countries that will make a distinction between residential and non-residential properties in a progressive scale. Because we only implement a progressive stem duty system for residential properties. But in many countries, I don't think they make a distinction between domestic and non-domestic properties. Thank you. I think I will simply reply. I would give a simple reply to the second question before the I R D supplement. Yes. Our proposal is of a progressive race regime for domestic properties. Well, some organizations may have a very small office, but then they may maybe on technology companies. For some companies, their premises may be very big. For instance, restaurants and supermarkets. So if we use a progressive race regime on businesses, then there may be a big impact on cost. And that's why for this time, we only apply this to domestic properties and not non-domestic properties. As regards overseas experience, Mister Law, my P S, Mister Alu, my D S can supplement.
Yes, thank you. On overseas experience, we have taken reference from Singapore and the U K who have a property tax similar to rates for domestic properties at progressive rates. Take Singapore as an example, how do they levy rates on domestic and non-domestic properties? Now, for domestic properties, they have a progressive race regime, but not for non-domestic properties. I said by the secretary. If we adopt a progressive race regime from non-domestic properties, there may be some unfairness. Mister Ten.
Thank you. In I R D, we have records of transfer of shares between companies with assets mainly in a form of properties. We maintain such records to see whether by transferring shares, companies are actually engaging in property transactions in order to evade stem duty. We can provide such statistics to members. But we have not kept record of all companies with assets and who have from which have transferred shares. We only maintain statistics of cases on that transfer properties by way of transferring shares. Mister Wong Chen Shaq, my question is T S Y O three three on BEPS two point zero. I said by the secretary, the system would only affect very large enterprises which have a global turnover of seven hundred fifty million euros. Now, I said by the secretary, the majority of businesses will not be affected. I agree with the secretary. Because these are global enterprises have their suppliers. And if multinational enterprise groups are affected, then actually quite a lot of S M Es would be affected as well. But I said by the secretary, our tax regime is simple, certain, and transparent. We have our advantages. So opportunities come with crisis. With BEPS two point zero, Hong Kong can enjoy more advantages. All right, we have to comply or implement BEPS two point zero because of international tax cooperation. What has the government done to encourage multinational enterprises groups to move their headquarters to Hong Kong so that we can attract their funds and capital as well? Yes, I think you have made a very good point. We have to honor our international tax obligations, and we have to maintain our competitiveness as well. We've already implemented some measures, as I said, in order to cope with this tax reform. Many enterprises and accountant firms are concerned. We've given resources to the I R D to set up a hotline. They have people there to answer questions from enterprises which may be affected by the new regime. We want to enterprises to be fully aware of their tax obligations. And we have always put in place measures and will continue to do so to help them. And I said by the member, it's not just groups affected by BEPS two point zero that will be impacted on other enterprises will be affected as well. We have to continue to maintain our competitiveness. Our overseas office, our E T Os, the staff there will continue to publicize Hong Kong's advantages to these countries. The Financial Services Branch, together with the Treasury Branch, and also colleagues responsible for economic development. And while we have got other advantages, we've been promoting our development in virtual assets and concessions for family offices so that international investors will be willing to continue to come to Hong Kong.
Mister So John. Chairman. I'd like to follow up on F S T B.
oh two seven. Chairman. My question is on the ten million allocated for the northern metropolis. So I'd like to know specifically how you're going to use the ten million and what effect it will bring to the area. But then it seems that you haven't given a very clear reply. Because first of all, you already stated that the question is not directly related to head one four seven. So you're saying that it's not under your ambit. But this should be under or ambit. So who should I approach to get an answer to my question? Well, as you already said, that it is not directly related, and therefore the answer is totally not related to my question. You only stated that you would announce relevant details in due course, and you will properly manage the project. So there is no specific answer. You can actually let me know that you do not have a concrete plan now, and then to give me a reply when you do. But you just try to shut off the responsibility by saying that the question is not related. Well, you have allocated one hundred billion. So I want to know why you are setting aside the one hundred billion, how you're using it, when you're using it. Since you're responsible for the future fund, I do want to know more about it and to receive more specific answers, because members of the public are very concerned about this as well. Thank you.
Secretary. Well, I'd like to clarify first, we're not trying to shut off any responsibility, and we respect every question asked by members. We tried our best to provide you with replies. I hope you would understand. Well, on the one hundred billion arrangement. This is not the real sum. We are still working on it, and therefore departments will need to work together to come up with a more concrete answer. We cannot provide you with a concrete answer right now because we are not sure whether we would need to move this to another fund, and we will need the approval of LECO before we can do that. We understand your views, but you can rest assured that we will, of course, update you with any new details. You asked how we are going to use the money and how much of the funding we'll be using. We are hoping that by setting aside this one hundred billion, we'll be able to move towards the direction of supporting the development of the northern metropolis. Well, it seems very vague, but it's not. Many of our colleagues are working hard on this project to consult LECO members as soon as possible. Thank you. Mr. Stanley. Mister, please unmute your microphone. Thank you, Chairman. Chairman. I have a view on public finance. The administration has always been holding on to old habits in wealth management. We do have a huge demand from the community. And public finance is a very important part of redeploying resources. We see that there's many one off support scheme for those in need, but then it is usually only a one off because the government cannot provide it on a recurrent basis. However, the government has not expanded its tax structure. We can actually try to increase our tax base. It will not have a too big of an impact on economic development. You should actually add in a new tier in our tax base. So for those with profit over one hundred billion to charge more tax and also land tax and inheritance tax. These are all taxes that can help increase the tax base of the government. Can the secretary try to address these three new tax bases? Thank you. Well, as you know, our tax arrangement needs to take into consideration the tax return and whether we are able to balance the economy and economic development. So this is actually how we look at horizontally. As for vertically, we consider other factors as well. In the estimates this year, we did introduce new measures such as in the last year with the STEM duty, and this time the progressive rating system enhancement. And also a tax arrangement on BEPS such as how we cooperate with international markets. A actually, by making such adjustments, it will increase our taxes. Mister suggested charging certain taxes such as adding in a new tier or perhaps the inheritance tax. We would need to consider this very cautiously. We're not just talking about the amount. There is also economical behavior and other considerations we need to look into. At the current moment, under the pandemic, or maybe for post epidemic economy, you would see more and more competition everywhere. Frankly speaking, I am sure other countries are trying to think of ways as well. So in considering our wealth management, we must try to ensure that we'll be able to maintain our position in the increasing competitiveness in the world. In the past two estimates, we did introduce measures to to increase our income. But many of the measures in social welfare, we will consider. It's not only one off, but regardless of it being one off or recurrent, we do need to make many different considerations, and we'll continue to listen to members' views. We'll need to close at eleven, and there are still some members waiting to speak. I'll just allow Professor Sun Dong to speak. Then we have to end. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. I'd like to follow up on talent development. There are many, Mr. Im Dong asked about the same question, because many of them have not been here for seven years, and therefore they are not permanent residents, and they are not able to receive the subsidies given by the government. The government keeps on saying that time is not enough and time is pressing. But this is not the first time that you're issuing consumption vouchers, and this will not be the last time. The government, you will need to take a large step. Since they're not able to do this, can you pledge that you'll be able to do it the next time or to come up with a timetable? There are actually many people who have not been here in Hong Kong for over seven years. So would it be fair for them not to receive the consumption vouchers? Many of them are working in Hong Kong, and they are contributing to Hong Kong's development. And you may say that they can actually receive other subsidies, but this is not fair, because this is part of public finance. You should need to support those who are making contributions to the society. If you do not provide subsidies to them, you would lose our talents in Hong Kong. Because we did mention that we want to try to attract more talents, but if you are not able to really to support them in times of need, then they will leave. And secondly, there are about hundreds of thousands of people working on the mainnet, and we have been trying to fight for more benefits for them. I think that so Hong Kong also need to try to think of it from a political perspective and in providing benefits to those who do not live who are not permanent residents as well. Well, thank you.
I'd like to defer to Ms. Wong. Well, actually, we're talking about large amounts of public funding, and therefore we need to set up means test, and therefore we will consider it legally, politically, and in an operation manager to see whether it is feasible. We have actually set out that those who are age over eighteen and who are permanent residents and new immigrants will be able to receive the consumer vouchers. For those who are not yet permanent residents, can we also include them as well? We would need to discuss with the immigration department and to ensure that we are able to make this feasible. Right now, we are in the second phase of preparation work. And once we come up with a conclusion, we will announce the details. Thank you. All right, our next session will start at eleven ten. Please come back on time.